Arizona zoning commission meeting for September 3rd, 2025. Roll call please.
Orell.
Here.
Budkey.
Here.
Clava.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Mattson.
Yep.
Reichert.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Wasvik.
Present.
Corn present.
All right, with that, reading an approval of the minutes from August 6th meeting. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Orell. Any further discussion on the minutes? Not seeing any hands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved as presented. All right. Public hearings, final approvals, petitions, and minor changes. Mr. Brooks.
Orders to amend section 180302 of city code related to multifamily parking requirements.
Sorry, Mr. Brooks. Now you're up.
Thank you. Chairman Wasvik, members of the commission, what we have here is the multifamily ordinance that we had last time. We didn't, no amendments were made since the last time, but I'll quickly run through them. Efficiencies, we're looking at 1.25 per unit. One bedrooms, one and a half per unit. Two bedrooms, two per unit.
Sorry. Three bedrooms plus two and a half per unit. These were, and then the one thing that we did discuss last time, dens. We would remain, have that still counted as bedrooms. Don't know if that's being, if they're being utilized as much, I think, because we have so many more efficiencies being looked at as well, being built, so that I think their designers of the apartment buildings are really capitalizing on those. So, from that, we did, we did, I don't know if it's unanimous at city council under preliminary, just to let you know. I know we did have, I think, at least one dissenter there, but I think overall, did receive favorable back to you for final approval. This is a public hearing, it's been advertised, and certainly ready to stand for any questions that you may have. All right. Any questions for Mr. Brooks before I open it up? Not seeing any from us. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to come up and address 3-1? Please do so at this time. Not seeing anyone. Close the public hearing, bring it back to commission. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert.
Second.
Second by Mr. Budkey. Any further discussion? I just want to put a note in there that this goes back to the way it was. We're going to go back to the way we were on the parking.
How what?
I said, if it goes back to this, which just becomes a gong show for parking and they squeeze units in, then I'm going to say, we need to readdress this at that time. But for now, we'll try to help out. Any other discussion? Not a call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 3-1 passes unanimously. 3-2.
Replat of lot D, block 1, Summers 4 subdivision located at 2313 North Washington Street.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Wasvik. So this is a request, a minor replat, which separates this lot here, D, into seven different lots for the purpose of renting or selling. There's no changes to the easements or right of way. Down here, where, there's a 13.1 foot side yard setback, which is under a required 15 feet, so that item will be going to board of adjustments next week, September 11th, to get a variance for that. With that, staff is recommending approval. I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions before I open up? Mr. Budkey.
Yeah, so Sarah, you mentioned the reduced setback. I guess it just struck me as odd reading through this, that we would approve a plat that we know needs an immediate variance? Like, why couldn't this plan be adjusted to shift a foot and a half north?
They're already built.
Really?
Right over by my office, I see them every day.
Okay.
Do you want to cover that one?
It's an existing building.
Existing building.
They built them this winter.
Got it.
Twice. A great point, Mr. Budkey. Any other discussions before I open the public hearing? With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who want to step up and address 3-2, do so at this time. Not seeing one, close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. 3-2 passes unanimously. 3-3.
Replat of part of lot 7, block 1, Heartland West Edition located at 3,005 Heartland Drive.
Ms. Johnson.
This is another minor replat request, which removes lot A here from the Heartland Business Center Association, placing it onto its own lot and disassociating it from the condo association. The replat will help clean up the titles and just split it off from the existing lot, which includes all of this right now. With that, staff recommends approval. I'll stand for any questions.
I'm going to ask the Mr. Budkey question on this one. Why couldn't we move that lot line back two feet and call it good? No adjustments or variations or anything.
Is, sorry, is it the line or the lot that's moving, or are we just, you said like disassociating it with?
So these two, yeah, so this one is the one that's splitting off right now. These are combined, so this will be split off into its own.
Okay.
But give him two more feet.
Yeah. There's no variances, there's no adjustments.
They must really want that two feet for something. Do we know why?
It's an issue with title, and we previously had an administrative way to join lots, and we did join these two prior. However, when we joined them administratively, nothing is recorded at the county that acknowledges that title combination. It's just simply a tax parcel combination. And so when it comes to dividing the property or potentially selling with a condo association, there's a gap in the title that creates a ripple domino effect going forward. So we've no longer allowed administrative combinations anymore for that reason. And so this, because it's almost a problem of our own making, we administratively did it, caused them to have issues with their title work, they now have to do this replat to clean it up in order to separate it out and properly track all of that property back to origination, right? So this is simply that, and in the process of doing that, yes, they are moving it two feet over, so they can establish that line where they want. But we have no administrative way to do that, so we have to go full replat.
It says something, we're looking at in the future, doing administrative plats on simple replats like this, to find out if, if there's a way through state law to do that, just because we're spending a lot of time talking about moving two feet at this level, and usually these are involved sales of some sort, and they're kind of holding up some sales. So we're looking at, is there administrative that we could come into some rules and get a approved variant, an ordinance that would allow us to do administrative plats? Some places do do that.
We're just trying to help out for the future.
Yeah, yeah, and that, I think that ordinance would be the way to do that in the future.
Okay. I guess I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who want to step up and address 3-3, please do so. Not seeing anybody, close that, bring it back.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert. Second by Mr. Mattson. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 3-3 passes unanimously. 3-4.
Plat of Demers 8 re-subdivision located at 2,500 and 2,600 Demers Avenue.
Ms. Johnson again.
So this item and the next one are together, so I can present those together if that is okay?
Please do.
Okay. So starting with the replat, it's a minor replat to combine the two lots located at 2,500 and 2,600 Demers Avenue. Here you can see there's a proposed storage unit development that extends on, from the 2,600 lot onto the 2,500 lot. The light blue lines are public easements, and then a lot line goes right through the middle here, so as it stands, it would not be permitted to be built across all of those lines. So the replat element of this is to combine the lot so that there is no lot line down the middle there. A condition of the replat is that a private drainage easement be provided within the public, formerly public easement area that is to be vacated, since there's a private storm sewer line in there that will remain in place. Also, a 15-foot easement is added on the plat on the south side of the property. And then over to the vacation. So these are the two utility easements there. They're both 10-foot utility easements that run parallel to the lot line that is to be combined. So again, as it stands right now, the development wouldn't be able to be completed over those easements and the lot line. So this is the vacation exhibit. And yeah, so with the replat and the vacation together, they'll allow for the development to be permitted as proposed. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
So any questions, then we'll split it up in public hearing and vote on it, but let's take it as a whole from us. Go ahead, Mr. Budkey.
So Sarah, are there any public utilities in the easement currently, or is it just, you know, nearby this existing private drain?
So there's no public easements within the current easement area. There's just a private storm sewer line in there. So that's why, yeah, the condition is to put in a private easement for the private utility, but there's no public utilities in there at this time.
Okay.
And obviously, Mr. Grassers looked through this, and there's nothing the city's going to need in the future that we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Okay? Any other questions? So we'll take the first one that was read in, 3-4. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to address 3-4? Close the public hearing, bring it back to commission.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reichert. Second by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 3-4 passes unanimously. Could you read 3-5 in for the record?
Vacation of utility easements located at 2,500 and 2,600 Demers Avenue.
Okay, and we've probably got enough information. We'll open the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Reichert.
Move approval.
Second by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? Not seeing any hands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3-4 passes unanimously. 3-5.
Vacation of sidewalk easements located at 1,500 Charwood Court, 1,514 Charwood Court, 2233 Springbrook Court, and 2237 Springbrook Court.
Mr. Brooks. Thank you, Chair Wasvik. So this one is a little bit, there's a history of it here. Some of you were not on planning and zoning about five years, but this was a discussion about five years ago. This is an easement that is both a utility and access easement. This Charwood Court, which is on access off of North 20th, or South 20th Street, has a connection through this area over to Springbrook Court, which as it moves to the west, links up with Ryder Road. There is, if I pull back to, to our GIS. It's up to Springbrook Court, not Ryder Road. I, I think Ryder Road's to the west of even Springbrook Court. Yep. This is my old hood. I grew up there. We'll call it the Wasvik hood. This, the, the easement makes a lot of sense in terms of connectivity to the area. As I pull back out here, and you can kind of, this is Red River here. There's connections. If there's kids, and a lot of kids in this neighborhood, and they want to get out to maybe a neighbor over here instead of going all the way out and around, they can just do this quick connection. It's quicker to move by foot than it is by car in this area, and that's the connectivity that we really look for. It also allows these kids here at Springbrook to then go along 20th Street here and then access up to Ben Franklin. That all works usually, and that's, that's very good, and the connectivity is really what we look for. But what's happening here is a little bit, I think we have to describe as somebody, instead of utilizing an easement, they're perhaps abusing it a little bit. It isn't the neighbors that are making the request, it's somebody else in the neighborhood. So I've connected within this, some police reports that have been filed as part of this, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to kind of take a look at that. And whether it be somebody who's potentially mowing that easement because they, for whatever reason, think that they can, it's not because the lawn wasn't mowed, it was because they just are treating this like it's their asset, public asset. And I, I think it's really beyond, it's really somebody trying to potentially thumb their nose at their, their other neighbors. So what became a, a asset to the neighborhood now is being abused by one person, and they are sitting on that, they're peering through fences, they're just sitting on that, making people uncomfortable just because they can. And I think this, what the requister is really, I think he's looking for some relief to a problem that is certainly come up. And we'll still need to keep this for utilities, but what they're looking for, and I think at some point I can certainly turn it over to them to maybe make their case more than, than I am, because they are kind of living through this a little bit. But as I, as I kind of zoom in here and turn on the utilities, actually, that go back to our staff report, which does a pretty good job of showing that. I probably closed it out. There it is. So we have sanitary sewer that runs through there, we have water line, we would need to maintain those. But the util, the access easement, which has never had a sidewalk on it, but is still being utilized, I think, by some in the neighborhood. That's, that's really where the issue's at. They have driveways across there, I think we've kind of left those alone. There's a big. I know that came up last time, right? It was the driveway across there. It was one of the complaints from somebody else. Yeah, I think that was from that one potential neighbor. The utility box that that neighbor's been on, I think he's standing here and watching somebody play hockey on that just because he could, right? He just sat up on that utility box. So it was concerning behavior. It's something that police are having a hard time removing them from that, that easement is what I understand. There may be some things being done with the ordinances and other ways that we can look at. Mr. Bucky had reached out to me and asked, is there any way to press pause on the access utility, or access easement for five years? I haven't got with the city attorney, but it's a very good question. And could that provide some relief? I, I haven't got an answer for you yet on that, but I certainly understand that, you know, there is, there is a sense here that these folks are certainly needing something. But with that, I know the applicant is here, and I think they do want to make some statements, but I'm certainly available if you guys have any questions before maybe opening up to others. Anyone have any questions on this one? It's a sticky wicket here. Well, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who want to step up and address 3-6, please do so. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Hekula, I live at 1514 Charwood Court. I'm neighbors to the applicant. Try to make this quick, but just want to say that courage starts with showing up and letting ourselves be seen. I'm here tonight because my neighbors and I don't feel safe in our own cul-de-sac, and it's time this is addressed. I've witnessed harassment firsthand. Our neighbor sets up a chair to stare at people, peeks through fences, threatens to call the police, and does call the police and the city 24/7 on us, threatens my children. I have four kids, 13, 14, four and three, five and three now. They don't feel safe. He also takes pictures of our yards if it's not up to his standards, and walks around like he owns the cul-de-sac. My neighbors and friends should not have to live this away afraid, watched, and policed in our own homes. This is why I support the request to vacate the easement. Right now, it enables behaviors that strips residents of peace and safety. Vacating is one important step toward restoring security and dignity in our neighborhood. But I also want to be open to layered solutions, because we know easements serve multiple purposes. If the council isn't prepared to vacate it outright, can we consider restricting it to public utilities only, so it can no longer be used as a public path? Allow us to put up no trespassing or restricted use signage, so that law enforcement has a clear tool for enforcement and when people misuse the space. Beyond the easement itself, I also ask the city if they can explore additional resources for us as neighbors, more active community policing or patrols to deter the harassment, mediation or conflict resolution services, access to mental health outreach or crisis teams that might support the neighbor Ron, so he's not left to spiral into behavior that harms us all. So we're not asking for protection, we're asking for partnership. My neighbors and I want safety, but we also recognize that Ron may be struggling, and addressing that could reduce the conflict for everyone. Help us find a solution that balances compassion and accountability, ensure that every family on our cul-de-sac can feel safe in their own home. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Just, I don't know, what do you do, right? Go ahead, Mr. Reichert, ask.
Have you sought a disorderly conduct restraining order against him?
I haven't. My neighbor has and has been granted one. I believe it was a temporary one.
Yeah, it's, speak to it. Yes, I'm Stephen Miller, 1510 Charwood Court. We were able to get a disorderly conduct restraining order against Ron, but the judge gave us a restraining order that basically has no teeth on it, so there's nothing, it's basically a no contact order. And they, the judge permitted him to continue using the easement, even though that was the main vehicle for him for harassing my family, mostly my wife and children.
So, and, I mean, this is awful. I, I really feel for you. I just don't know if this is the right vehicle, right? I mean, if we shut down this easement, isn't he just going to stand in the middle of your street or go somewhere else? I, I mean, I, this seems like a really extreme measure to do, and I don't think it's going to help you, quite frankly.
It's just going to set him off, I was thinking.
One, yeah, I don't, I mean.
I don't know.
I'm shocked that the police don't do something. I mean, harassment, disorderly conduct, very easy to, to bring charges from the sorts of conduct that I'm seeing, and it seems like the courts are far better equipped than, than to start changing property descriptions and, and moving things around. It just, so I'm trying to get a sense of what else is, what else is he doing, and how does, how do you think this is going to help your problem?
Right. So I just wanted to say that, you know, that Ryan pointed out earlier that there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and that they can cut through the easement there to be able to, you know, access, get quick access to 20th and continue on, but.
And are you comfortable with that? Are you comfortable?
I'm fine with it, but I just want to add that kids don't really use it at all. There's maybe a one or two, but since there's no, excuse me, since there's no sidewalk there, it's not really well-known. Only maybe persons that have lived in the neighborhood for years and are well aware of the plot are aware of the actual sidewalk easement there. It's an unpaved sidewalk easement. So removing it, removing it, what, no one would even know it was an easement if you removed it, maybe than, other than like maybe three or four neighbors. it, maybe than, other than like maybe three or four neighbors. So there's really no, I give what you're saying, but, and also, yeah, he could stand at the, you know, at the end of our driveway or, you know, in the street and, you know, maybe do something there. But the biggest problem is, is that the easement cuts up down our driveway. So he can literally, our kids can't even play in our own driveway because he will take his bike and ride up like right on the edge of the easement, which will goes right down our drive. So he basically, our kids still can't even play in our driveway because there is a sidewalk easement right down our driveway. Like, and it's not just like it's a little bit, it's a good portion. And Sarah's driveway is the same way as well, too. A good, like, half of her driveway is part of the sidewalk easement, which makes no sense.
So Steve?
Megan.
Megan, yes.
Yep, we hear you.
Is the public hearing closed or?
Open.
Open. But you can, if you have something to ask the people up here?
Well, no, not specifically. I don't think that, you know, we're being asked whether or not we should vacate this easement. Unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do when part of their backyard is basically public property. But this, you know, this is, I'm probably a broken record here, but how long has this neighborhood been here? This easement is here, some people know about it, it's not paved, so.
There's no lighting or anything either.
There's no lighting, it's not safe. So it's not safe for the people who live next to it. And quite frankly, it's not necessarily safe for the kids who are walking through because there's no sidewalk. So the city isn't taking care of it. So moving this, like putting it on pause, in my opinion, is even worse. Because then we're pretending it's not there and then we're bringing it back. Are we also teaching kids that they should cut through random neighborhoods' yards just because they can do it there? I mean, kids should be taught that they walk on the sidewalk, not through someone's yard. I was on planning and zoning when this came before and was denied. And so I'm hoping that tonight, I mean, I know it's still the public hearing, but I'll move approval to vacate this easement.
Aside from the utilities, we don't see it used. I can't, I have documentation and videos.
Okay. Well. Thank you, Megan. And also, we had to put up a privacy fence because you could clearly, when people walked through, they would clearly spy on us and look at us when we're in our backyard. We had no privacy, we don't, like, I just want to add what you're saying, we don't really have a backyard, we have a public backyard and we have a, we have a public driveway, we don't have a private driveway that my children can use and play around and ride their bikes up and down the driveway.
I'm also hopeful that moving forward, if these are put in new developments, which I will vote against, that those sidewalks go in before the lots are sold. Because this is a continued problem in places where they were put in to someday be a sidewalk. And it's not fair to the folks who are living there, who find out later or have to deal with this type of thing. So there's nothing we can do about that tonight, clearly. But I would love to see something come forward that, that those sidewalks, when they are in new developments, are put in right away with all the rest of the sidewalks, everything else that's going in.
I moved, I moved to Springbrook Court in 1976, '77 when I first, we could see Ben Franklin, and my best buddy lived at 1506 Charwood Court. And they were promised a sidewalk back then on that easement in the 70s, and it never came through. And so the driveways got, they added garages, the driveways got bigger or encroached it, nobody said nothing about that. So now here we are, stuck with it again. I agree with Megan, something should have been done back in the 70s, the 80s, the 90s before everybody added on garages and driveways and everything else. But we'd cut through there and we'd get yelled at in the spring when it was muddy because we'd ride our bikes through there. So, I mean, this thing's been going on since the 70s. So with that, any other questions for the homeowners? I mean, we 100% feel for you here, this is a crappy situation. It's hard to change an ordinance over one person, but it's a crappy situation. So thank you very much. Or if you had something else.
Well, I'm just going to say, it's not just about the person, I mean, it's a clearly unsafe setup as well.
Sure. No, appreciate you. Thanks for coming. So with that, Megan, your motion, I'll close the public hearing. You have a motion?
I would motion to vacate the sidewalk easement.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Kleba?
I'll say that.
Okay. Second by Mr. Kleba. Any further discussion? Mr. Buckey, come on.
Please, Mr. Buckey.
Yeah, this sucks. I, when I read this, I thought back to the other meeting five years ago, right? And at that point, I advocated for and, you know, tried to get the fellow commissioners to agree to leave the easement in place. Ryan, I appreciated in the packet, you included the original plat, right? Which I think does a pretty good job of showing the design intent when it comes to that connectivity, right? We've got a whole bunch of kind of cul-de-sacs and looping roads, sounds like, well, I mean, you can see those were then connected through these easements and it sounds like they've been used in one form or fashion for quite some time. So, yeah, I read this and I felt kind of sick, kind of angry, because this stinks. But the reason I advocated for them, for the easement to remain back then is because I genuinely think that it's, I genuinely think that there should be these connections available for, for people to walk through, so.
Can I ask a question?
Please, yeah.
So in that situation, like, would it be plausible for the city to come and do a survey to see how often it's actually used to determine if that's even an argument? Because, I mean, I have, we both have cameras there, we would be more than willing to do the survey for you guys, that, I mean, it's not even used daily, if weekly. So would that be a plausible thing to ask the city to do?
I wouldn't object to that. I don't know, that's my.
Because I agree, I agree with you that, you know, having connectivity in a neighborhood and allowing foot traffic to get from place to place is very important, but it's not being used, there's no sidewalk, there's no lighting. Where does that liability stand? Does that stand on the homeowner? What if there's a hole that happens? You know, there's plenty of things, and it's not being maintained, it's not being looked at by the city. There's so many things that's being neglected on this, that to have that argument or to stand by needing that, I think needs a little bit more research from the city.
If it was being, if it was sidewalk, I think it would get used more. I don't know to what level. Would we have put it on this cul-de-sac and the one to the south? I don't know if we would have just done one originally or not. I guess that's what it comes down to. I think is, if people don't know, they do feel like they're walking on somebody's yard when there isn't a pathway there. So those that are cutting through are probably kids actually thinking that they're doing something they shouldn't, I think, for the most part. If we had these as sidewalk, I think they would feel like it was where they were supposed to go. Under the current situation, it's not. And what we have is one individual knows it's there, and I think what we have is somebody abusing it, not using it. And so that's what it's coming down to now.
Right.
So I would like to stick with my motion of just vacating that sidewalk. And then in the future, we should notice that those sidewalks need to be poured when the developments come. But at this point, I think, I don't want to take city resources studying that it's two people or 40 people, I still think it should be vacated.
And I think you got to go back to, you know, driveways are put on it, looks like part of a garage might be encroaching on it. I mean, how do you deal with that?
It looks like the driveway's over the lot.
I know, it's, yeah. So there's a, there was a lot of things done in this area that were wrong, starting off with not building the sidewalk right away to Mark Deesman's place. So, yeah, any other, anybody else got comments on it? I mean, we have a motion and a second, so therefore I'll call for a vote. All who's in favor of vacation, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can we get the no's just for the record, just so we have the minutes?
Mr. Reikert, Mr. Buckey?
Yeah, thank you.
Goes to the city council.
Ordinance to amend zoning map to rezone from B3 general business district to Ideal Aerosmith planned unit development PUD located at 3001 South Washington Street.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair Wasbuck. So this one, if, I'm trying to think of some of the landmarks here. So we have Simonsons here, 32nd and Washington. Simonsons located here, Happy Joe's is at 2909 here, this is the old Steers Hitch and Go area here. Ideal Aerosmith is in between, I don't know if people recognize it as much now, perhaps you do if you drive by there. The use that they're doing on the site is, is assembly and some manufacturing, they're putting together a lot of parts and those types of things, not something typically allowed within a B3, which is our general business district. However, I've been through the building, I've listened to them doing some of the assembly and it's a lot of UAS, it's a lot of other types of things, it is not loud in there at all. I had conversations similar to most building setups. It was not loud at all, it's a little unusual. It, I'm not sure it would be, it certainly wouldn't be inappropriate for it to be in an industrial area, but it is, I don't think it's, would be bad within our commercial district. And we're going to get a lot of people looking at some of these types of setups. There is housing on the backside, they've been operational there for quite some time. What the limit has been up until now is 30% of the footprint of the building was allowed to be this assembly, because we do have something in code that allows them to do something related up to 30% within their building that isn't listed within our code piece. They're probably coming close to exceeding that now, but they are looking at doing the expansion on site on this south portion here that's definitely going to increase them beyond the 30%. But what I'm hearing in that facility, I worry about what the externalities are on that neighborhood, they are not loud at all. And that was the biggest thing I was concerned about when I started talking about assembly. It really works with what they're doing. What I saw on the inside of that building were workstations, there was some soldering going on, those types of things, but it was very quiet. Conversations were being had throughout that facility, they probably actually needed some white noise pieces to allow conversation that was going on in one part of the building not to be heard in another part. So it was, and it's a secure facility, but it, I think it, I think it works there. But the way to make that work was, was to go through a PUD and add that as a use, allowable use, so that they have the security that they can make expansions on site without, with some, that they'd be secure in terms of their zoning. So what we're proposing to do is to have it go to a PUD and then list that use as being allowable. So this is preliminary, we'll do notification around to the neighborhood. What the neighborhood will see in the long run will be a small addition onto this, this site here for future. And today, we haven't heard any complaints from the neighbors along the backside, they actually, some of the neighbors, I think, drain into their swale along the backside here to take care of some of their drainage issues, and they've worked well with the neighbors from what we understand.
So what happens, Ryan, let's say, a year, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, this thing sells. Does that PUD stay with the lot?
Yeah, we would, what we're.
Do we have to come back and get it back to a B3?
What we're proposing is B3 plus, allowing the manufacturing assembly of these types of facilities on that site.
Then worst case scenario, let's say they move in a, put an addition on and bring a bunch of welders and hammers and everything else in there, then what's our teeth to say, hold on, when you were here, you were soldering and you were, I've been in there as well, like I told you. But what's our recourse then to say, okay, now, now you're, now you're manufacturing stuff, you're building steel studs and you're banging stuff all around because we allowed you to manufacture?
That's a very good point. I think what we need to do is the limits still with the noise ordinance and those other things, which would be in place for any facility, but we could certainly bring it back. Welders start to get louder within facilities and then we'd start looking at, our noise ordinance would still be in play for any, anybody, but I think those would start to get louder next to a residential, but.
Right, but you know how that goes, we just spent $100,000 on equipment, now what are we going to do? We got this.
We would have to limit them.
I'm just looking out for 302, 308, 316, and 33022.
I think we'd need to limit it to the types of, make sure that.
Hard to describe what they do in there.
It is very difficult to describe, and they probably not, cannot completely tell me everything that they do do in there.
Correct. So what is, I guess I'm not quite understanding the problem. I mean, I assume, you know, when Ski and Bike Shop is on, they assemble bikes, when the hot tub place, I'm sure they assemble hot tubs, you know, in their showrooms and things like that. And I've got a bunch of concerns with the, first of all, spot zoning is what we're doing, you know, so now we're going to have this island of this. Steve's point is the biggest point, I think, which is, we, once we do this, we completely lose control of, we just had people in here saying, the police, the, you know, they're not enforcing what we need in order to get this done. So you're saying, oh, we'll just have the noise ordinance. Well, the police may or may not do that, right? And I under, it seems to me this is working great for them, but at some point they needed to expand. Well, when you expand, now go to where this, spend your money in the industrial park, right? I mean, it seems to me. But tell me if that's not the right way to think about it, if we want to just let this sort of grow to the point where it may become a disturbance.
Yeah, so they, well, first of all, I will tell you, the police do not enforce zoning ordinance, so in this case, that if there is a problem, it isn't police.
And that goes to my first point, what's the, who's, who is in there saying, we're going to shut you down? Nobody, right?
What happened was, they came to us for an expansion and I said, that, you're kicking above the 30% rule that we had put into place, so now you need to do this. We came up with some other options, there was a thought of doing a fitting incompatible, and I'll be honest with you, I did think long and hard about that. Can we, can we fit this in under a fitting incompatible where we come, present to you and say, yes, what they're doing is fitting and compatible on that site, keep it B3? And they're doing manufacturing, it's no different than automotive pieces that are done, working on cars, those types of things, which you probably.
It's kind of a big difference though, Ryan, because the more I think about it after we talked, you know, you've got, you've got your Simonsons, you've got your retail restaurants, whatever, and then you've got a manufacturing. It's like, what fits where? I mean, nobody wants to lose Ideal Aerosmith out of, you know, their business here, we want them here, but is there, I mean, there is a lot better places for them, but.
Well, they're in the WDAZ building, and I think they're in Conlins now, is the same thing planned in three locations now and are going to be here two more times, or?
I think the WDAZ has offices, I think some of those may get moved into here depending on, but they are renting out that, I think they do own Conlins now and they're under that 30% there. Their long-term goal is to build, we have had discussions about them building with us, that's a, that's a very expensive and will take a long time to get to that, but that is what their long-term plan is, is what they've told. to that. But that is what their long-term plan is, is what they've told us, is to, is to build new construction out in the business park. And they'll be one of fairly quiet out there, but that, that's certainly an option for them. But that is what they, they've been working with us on purchasing land.
Ms. Sandy's got her hand up. I can see it. That's, that's neat.
That's true. I'm pretty uncomfortable with this as well. I feel like they've expanded beyond what they have for their building space in the appropriate zoning area. And so sometimes those growing pains kind of force you into an area where it belongs rather than trying to make the area fit with, what they need because there are lots of neighbors around and that's not the intent of that area. I would prefer to see them, you know, unfortunately, it's, it won't be an inexpensive thing, but I don't think it's right to change the zoning in the neighborhoods when, when they're the ones that are, are growing and actually need a different space.
Mr. Budke.
So for the commissioners that have spoken up, I mean, what about a conditional use permit? Would something like that route be more agreeable? Would that be acceptable? I know you can't speak for them, Ryan, but like, would that give them the confidence to like, carry on the project that they're, that they want to see?
They've been talking about this addition for at least 15 years.
The big problem is B3, we do not have a listed manufacturing within our allowable, because, you know, we have a conditional. It would need to be listed as, hey, in a B3, you can ask for this as a conditional. We do not have that currently. There is no, what they're proposing to do isn't listed as, you know, within our B3s. We're comfortable with asking for a conditional for manufacturing. It's, it's not in there currently, but-
Which to me, that's, that's telling that it doesn't belong there because you can't even get a conditional use permit. It's not listed as, as an option, so.
Well, I mean-
I'm having a hard time, you know, writing between, you know, what manufacturing of LM wind, wind fire blades versus what Ideal Aerosmith is in terms of, you know, we, there are, there's a lot of like UAS manufacturing pieces that are out there currently in the community, which I would not consider to do that, to do some of that assembly, that manufacturing of the, like, the UAS industry that's going on. I wouldn't say that that's automatically got to go into an industrial place. But I don't know how to exactly define the difference between a car manufacturing and a UAS assembly of parts of, of those types of things.
Is there, is there a difference? We're thinking the same way here. Difference between manufacturing and assembly?
As far as the code goes.
And by what we call it. If they're assembling, they're assembling parts together, like you said, the bike shop or whatever. If they're manufacturing, they're actually welding, building-
Molds and-
Whatever.
Big loud machines and-
Right. I, I just-
I'll pop into our, our Grand Forks city code piece here. I do not think we have a dis, a great-
Well, let's see what the definition of manufacturing versus assembly.
Right. Or just manufacturing.
Yeah. We don't have a definition of the manufacturing piece in here. So there's no definition for that manufacturing. And I don't think we've got one for assembly either.
Are they chomping at the bit to build this thing?
They are. They're looking to get in, in the, in the fall with their new building construction. So that is, they're, they're under a tight timeframe. They were pretty excited about the thought of doing the fitting compatible, but they understood why I think I needed to, there was some certainty as well going the PUD route in terms of listing that as a use. So they are really stuck. It's a commercial corridor. But it's that, I know we're calling it manufacturing and it, it is manufacturing of parts for, but it isn't the same as a heavy manufacturing that we would see with the wind blades and with actually building planes. And, and those types of things are much different than the small parts that they're doing completely within a building and putting on a pallet and sending off because they're, they're small manufactured pieces.
Explain to me, Ryan, explain to me this, you, you've used this term a couple of times now, fitting and what?
Fitting and compatible. Within our B3 ordinance, we do allow for-
The catch-all?
Yeah, a little bit of a catch-all for allowance for other businesses of the same general character to those specifically permitted within the districts, provided they are deemed fitting and compatible with the statement of intent as determined by the City Planning and Zoning Commission.
So we could say that what they're doing is fitting and compatible?
Correct. But then how would that-
Would that be a different, would we have the ability to do that now, today? Because nobody's asked us to do that.
You're correct. I did not put it on the agenda as such, but we could do that for October and they would still fit the same timeframe if everybody's comfortable with that.
Can we just direct you to approve the, that part of it?
Well, we could direct you to kick it up to council that way.
No, it goes to planning. Planning and zoning has final determination on fitting and compatible.
We do?
It's not on the agenda though.
Then I, then I would like to see some kind of explanation of what we're going to approve for fitting and compatible. I mean, we understand their business is a little tight-lipped, but, but they could give us a general description or something of what they're manufacturing. And then in the October meeting, we could decide if that's fitting and compatible, right? That's the way I'm reading that?
Yeah, but can't, can't we just approve it now?
It's not on the agenda. It's not, wasn't-
I'd like to make a motion.
Try her.
I'd like to make a motion to deny. I, I think it's great that they're in our community. I hope they continue to be. I know that they've been discussing building. I think that you get to a certain point when it's time to pull the trigger. And I don't think that we should be trying to find loopholes for them to run a business that doesn't fit within our zoning. It's a slippery slope. They have a very successful business and I think that's great. But I, it sounds to me that it's, it's time for them to, to find a new, a facility that works for what they're doing in their buildings.
Okay, we have a motion. Anybody like to second it? If we don't get one, then it falls.
Okay, so-
We have a motion.
Right.
No second.
Right, so, so that's nothing. All right, so.
She, she done.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I think I'm confused a little bit about them being industrial. What defines industrial? Because-
Manufacturing.
Okay. But to what, like, they don't, it's not heavy industrial?
We have light industrial and heavy.
Right. So I still don't know that, I've been in the building and I'm a little bit aware of what they, like, I wouldn't think that that's, like, it's, I guess it's manufacturing because they do build things there, but they also-
I would feel way more comfortable telling them that you're okay to do, what I'm hearing from every single person is that we're all fine with this happening here. We're just worried about all the other consequences. So that seems to me the definition of fit or whatever it is.
And fitting and compatible.
Fitting and compatible. If everybody says this is fitting and compatible.
Like, they're not manufacturing something that's going to require a semi to back up into the backyards of Legend Lane, back park, whatever.
Yeah, they do. Have some place come in there.
But McDonald's has semis.
Right, 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 right. They're not hauling out wind lights. They're, I mean, it's, they may, yeah.
There's not smoke stacks and loud noise.
No. I'm more concerned about if their addition is going to, I mean, if they start talking about a three-story addition behind these poor people again, that, you know, that's where we run into that problem.
Yeah, forget that.
But I don't, I don't see what they manufacture as being a disturbance, nor do I feel like we really need to change the zoning. I think fitting and compatible makes sense. So I would make a motion to-
We almost got a table.
I was going to say-
But do we?
Well, but do we?
We don't have, we don't have the city attorney here. What you're about to do, I think, makes sense. Do it. We'll pass it. If the city attorney comes back and says, you can't do that because it wasn't noticed properly, then we can take it up at the October meeting.
Well, it is preliminary. So it does have to come back for final.
It doesn't. No. So what, what I would propose is to amend, make a motion to amend the agenda to add that to the agenda. And then you could approve that tonight.
Yeah, you're right.
Really?
Yeah. You, we can amend the agenda and add it to the agenda.
Without violating the open meeting law?
It's preliminary. I keep saying.
Okay, I'm okay with, if it doesn't mess up their timeline, I'm okay with tabling-
I think you, I think what you're, I, I'm hearing that perhaps the majority aren't, are feeling comfortable with the fitting and compatible. We could do that in October. We could tightly word this a little bit on what, you know, I can get them put in writing everything that you're going to do there. You guys could look at that and find out if that's fitting and compatible. And getting that on our October 1st agenda, making sure everybody's on board with that, with that wording. And that would be October 1 and done at, through planning and zoning. And that would be a quicker timeline than what we're headed on.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Does this go to city council?
What I'm hearing being, potentially being considered would be a, planning and zoning could make that determination on its own.
I'm not comfortable with that because I feel like when we make some of these changes and we design our city, we were not elected to make this sort of a change in a neighborhood. We are appointed and I think we should let this fall on the elected officials in our city. This is a pretty big change, especially if you're in the backyard on Legend Lane.
And don't we have to have a public notice or not?
That's what I was going to say too.
The, the fitting and compatible would be you guys taking a look and saying, this use meets, and we're comfortable with this type of specific use being within a B3. And so that would not require notice of the neighborhood. If we were, went on, on the path that we were continuing on, then we would notify, we'd get the comments here. We would forward it on to city council. If they gave a preliminary approval, it would come back to you at final. We'd be notifying 800 feet around the property owner and then neighbors could comment at that time.
And if you really think about it, if those neighbors are going to react like, what I think they're going to react like, they're all going to come in here and say, you're seriously putting a manufacturing plant by my house? Because that's what they're going
Exactly why we should let the neighborhood know and let them have their voice.
Yeah, I, I-
I agree.
I, I would agree with that. I mean, they should know what's going next to them. If they're adding on that much.
So heading in-
Well, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. If this was a McDonald's and they wanted to double the size of it, would we notify the neighbors? No, we wouldn't.
Because the restaurant's listed within the B3.
Right.
Right. As I understand it, and the only reason that I'm pushing for this is what, everybody here has seen, I apparently am the only one that hasn't been in the Ideal Aerospace Building, but I'm still going to try and help them out, even though they've never invited me. But, okay. We're putting a building that any other person would be allowed to build and you're telling me it's going to make no more noise than, it's not going to make any noise. It's not going to be disturbing. It's not going to be a problem. So the thing that the neighbors are going to complain about is the building being there. We can't stop them from building a building there. If they want to say, fine, we're going to build a storage facility there, then they build it. We can't stop them.
If it's storage and they aren't going over that 30%, because that, that's an important part is that their use, as long as they were under 30%, we were good. This was going to push them above that 30%.
Even with their addition?
With their, yeah, because the addition was-
Manufacturing.
Was manufacturing, yeah. So, and, and they were honest with me. They said, that's, yes, that's where we're going to be at. We're going to be above that 30%, which allowed them originally to go there. I think to Megan's point is that, I think what she was saying is we, we, we worked with them, I think, to get them in originally, maybe this wasn't her point. We, the city did work with them to get them into that building originally. The WDAZ, that's engineers. Those are, that's office, what they're doing on that site. We know that. There's, there's no assembly going on there. Those are, those are folks at computers that could happen in any other B3 site. And so we do know, they are looking long-term at, at going to try to build a building. I think that's taking time for them, I believe. We have asked the question of where they're at in terms of getting to that place, only because we are involved in potentially selling them land. But I, I, I haven't received word back yet on, on where they're at with that.
We're struggling on both sides. Mr. Clay, go on.
So, I, can I just make another comment? If we're trying to find a way to push this through without having to notify the neighborhood and without having to have it go to city council, then we're doing something wrong.
I, I think that's the, that was probably why I chose, from a staff level, not to go to the fitting and compatible and go to the rezoning. I thought it was safer all around. Mostly in terms of, I think, definitely to the point of trying to get neighborhood feedback. I, I don't think the neighborhoods had an issue, but this definitely gives them an opportunity to, to speak. I will say that 800 feet goes a long ways. And I've let people know in the past that, you know, if somebody doesn't like Ideal Aerosmith along South 10th Street, you're probably going to hear from them. And, and in the past, planning commission's been realistic in terms of those complaints that come, obviously Legend Lane, I think those voices would definitely be heard loudest in terms of, you know, I don't think the traffic, traffic goes out to Washington. It's really going to be about, what's this noise and what's it, what's it hitting to the neighborhood?
May even reduce the noise, putting a big building between them and South Washington.
Potentially. I think, I think you'll definitely hear, like, this building here, I think, could have been loud, but they're looking at doing, like, I think they were putting some pallets together there. That would have been the only thing that would have potentially had some noise.
You had a comment, I guess, or question?
If we determine that it's fitting and compatible, which basically is more of like how we are interpreting things. And at some point, the neighbor has a complaint and says, I don't think this is fitting and compatible anymore. It would come back to us and we can make a new determination at that point, could we not?
It would, there would have had to been some change. I guess this, here, why it was no longer fitting and compatible. But if they're saying, I'm hearing something or some sort of externality, I think that they would have to make, they, they could make their plea to, to the city at that point, correct?
But then they just put a huge addition on and then we're sunk again. I'm with you. I don't know what. Mr. L, sorry.
Do we get to approve when they put the addition on? Do we get to have a peek at it again?
No.
No, well, once-
Will change setbacks or some other modification?
As long as they're meeting the B3 requirements of setback and-
Right. Because all of a sudden, if we see a building that's two stories high and they have a 22-foot-high overhead door and, you know, but yeah, okay, we don't, so.
One of the big things I'm struggling with is the UAS industry is expanding in, in Grand Forks. And I don't think all of those uses are appropriate only in industrial. I do think they're appropriate in a lot of commercial businesses. And I'll, I'll tell you, that's one of the things I'm struggling with on this as well, is that the, that industry, and that's not the only thing that Ideal Aerosmith does, but that industry, I think, is appropriate in a lot of commercial buildings. And I'll state that pretty plainly. And we don't have UAS only being built in a lot of buildings. But if, if we were, I would say that those would probably be appropriate within a lot of commercial buildings.
Light, yeah, light assembly is just so much different.
Correct.
But yeah, I mean, if you, if the neighbors are there saying, oh my God, they're so loud right now, you can't have more, then that's an easy deal, right? But that's not what we're hearing, right?
Well, we don't know yet.
We aren't, but yes, we have a-
Said they've been in this building and it's, it's not loud.
Right, so I, I think-
That's what I'm worried about, is it being loud.
And, and the current path that it's going on, in terms of asking for that rezoning comments, we'll get that, the 800 feet around, if we hear other people come that state other things, then that, and that, that timeline did meet, they were understanding and could beat that, that October, that October timeframe.
I don't like changing the beauty.
No, I don't either.
I don't, I don't like that.
All right, I moved the table.
I'll second.
No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Tabled.
So, just in terms of a question, is the thought then that I bring back a fitting and compatible next time?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and notify the neighbors.
Okay, I could certainly do that, that wouldn't be what code requires, but we could certainly do that.
That's fine.
I, I really, I would agree with Megan, I think it needs a public hearing.
Yeah, I do, too. Well, because we need some facts to back up the fitting and compatible.
And I think they should explain, they don't have to tell us exactly, because I know they have some sensitive stuff, but we've all had nondisclosures, we understand our job here, but they should have something at least what they're manufacturing, well, you know?
They can tell us the noise level.
It's a widget, it's a widget, and it makes this noise.
Yeah.
Or, you know what I mean?
We'll notify the fitting and compatible like it's a rezoning, but it won't be an official public hearing, if, if that makes sense, it'll be a notification that this is gonna be on the agenda.
And then it's up to us if we call up neighbors or not, I don't know.
Correct.
You, you, you as the chair can call on people?
I will get some guidance from the city attorney as well.
That's probably the smart thing, give me a, give me a call.
Because that will be very unusual.
Have him look at, I mean, if we expect this sort of thing to continue, I don't want to make every mom and pop person that's building 25 drones to have to buy a lot in the industrial park, I mean, so, see if we can maybe, if he can maybe come up with some kind of definition for assembly in B3.
Versus manufacturing.
Right. If this is truly different.
It's not industrial to me.
Thank you.
All we care about is that it's not disturbing anybody, right?
I think we're getting lost in words.
I understand the assignment.
Thank you. Redraw, redo. Reports from the planning department.
So, for updates this month, we had Bell Bank, Domino's, paving, Mincota Power Corp., Lay Down Yard, all approved. The signed subcommittee met on August 7th, we're continuing to discuss billboard changes, and then also, we are having a land development code audit done by AARP and their consultants, I don't know if you want to see.
Sure. Quick update on that, is that should be drafted late September, early October, so hopefully we'll have something finalized, November, December timeframe to bring back to you. And the biggest thing on our end will be what to do with the audit, once we have received it, and what they're going to be looking, is it how compatible, missing middle types, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, how fitting our code is to do those types of things, so we'll keep you guys updated and let you know.
All right.
The last thing I'll say, MPO updates, the new MPO director, Ben Arith, who's actually from Grand Forks, is coming back, he's been working in Bismarck, he's starting September 15th, so we will be welcoming, welcoming him aboard, so. And then, standing monthly meeting was linked there as well, on the agenda.
All right, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Do I get a second? Meeting adjourned, thanks, everyone.